Good evening. I'm going to open the City Council and Urban Renewal Agency meeting for June 10th, 2024, call a declaration of a quorum. We're going to excuse Counselor Myers, and I believe Counselor Dron is going to be late, so we'll excuse her for now. Please join me in the flag sleuth.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully you didn't miss me too much from the last City Council meeting. I appreciate Counselor Primmer for filling in for me. First up on our agenda, Mr. Smith, we don't have any changes to our agenda seating. Okay. First up on our agenda this evening is a presentation from the Hermiston School District, and I see Mr. Bacon out there. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Well, we were fortunate enough to experience another wonderful graduation event that took place last week.
Is this microphone on, Lily?
Is it?
It is. Okay. Good. Thank you.
I was gonna give you a hard time, Dave. Which was a great experience. We had 368 students graduate this year, which is pushing our upper limits of the highest class that we've had come through with graduates, so that's great news. Of the, of those graduates, we were able to recognize three valedictorians this year. And then with honors diplomas, we were able to recognize 31 students and then 91 or 92 students graduating with honors. And so just a little bit of information on what that honors diploma is. The requirement of 27 credits overall, which is more, which is above the 24 that's required by the state of Oregon. And then also required a 3.5 GPA. You had to have earned credit in two AP courses and participated in securing a one program of study to receive those. You have other options that on the program of study, you can take additional two advanced courses or have five credits in the performing arts to earn that. So it takes quite a bit to, to reach that goal and to have 31 students is pretty good. So we're excited about that. We had 190 total program of studies awarded this year, which is recognized at our evening of excellence prior to graduation. So that was pretty exciting. And I'm not, we're not sure, I, we weren't able to compare, but it's up there with the most that we've had. So we're getting kids involved all over the place. Ten students were able, have met the requirements to join one of our four service branches in the military. And then overall, our seniors reported earning right around $3.9 million in scholarships. And of that 3.9, out of Yumattilla in Moro County, $370,000 of that was from, from our local folks, which is, again, another testament to our, to our community. Uh, let's see. Summer program is kicking off. We've talked about that the last couple of times we've been here. We're up over 830 range, students participating at the elementary level, 250 at the middle school, and then 478 at the high school level. And elementary begins June 24th through August 2nd for currently enrolled kindergarteners through fourth grade. And then the middle and high school, they run two different sessions. That's June 17th through the 28th, and then July 15th through the 26th. And we'll be serving meals again, like we have in the years past, and those sites for 18 and younger will be able to go and get free lunches there. And you don't have to be enrolled in our summer programs in order to do that. It's anybody in the community that's 18 or younger can come in and get a lunch and breakfast. Athletics is wrapped up. This year, we had, over the course of the, the school year, 12 of our 20, I think it's 26, 29 programs were represented in participating or competing at the state level, which is more than we have had in the past. Thirteen, if you count boys and girls track as separate, separate programs. But with our 12, we counted that as one. So again, it's really nice to see our kids really stepping up and competing across, across the state there. And then we were able to just wrap up. The district was able to help support hosting a bilingual basketball tournament this last weekend, which we, I actually was able to participate. Not me, but had some kids participating in it, and it was just a wonderful experience, getting kids from all over our region involved in it and participating in it. It was fun. So again, just another thing to bring folks into our community and show off all the great things we have here in Hermiston going on. Summer break is gonna kick off, so last day for students is tomorrow. Teachers are done on Wednesday. And here we go, and we're gearing up for next year. So that right there is what's going on.
Got kindergarten registration already done?
What's that?
Kindergarten registration already done?
It's going on throughout the year. We actually are going to be hosting two different registration sessions in July out of the district office. It'll run from 12 to 8:00 PM, and the dates are, um, I think, oh, July 9, 11, 23, and 25. So we'll be posting that information and pushing it out. We'll be running a Kinder Camp again this year, which was very successful. We, we have, I think we're pushing over 250-ish, right in that range, kindergartners that have registered so far, which is good news. We want more.
Yeah. Yeah. It's great. And like 1,600 students in summer school. That's third student body.
Yeah.
A little more.
Yeah. And we expect, our, our numbers typically have been lower than middle school level. You know, there's that motivation at the high school level because they're still doing some credit retrieval.
Right.
And then the exploration opportunities at the elementary level and just the need for, you know, the bottom line is a place for your elementary kids to go while parents are working.
Yeah. Yeah. That's fair.
Does, perhaps I missed it, and I, I don't know, does, does our high school participate in the ability for the students to graduate with a degree and, with like an AA or an AS degree?
Students can, yes.
Did we, did we have any that did that?
My knowledge, we have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bacon.
All right.
So do you actually get to take some time off here too, or do you gotta wait till July?
It's year round.
Year round.
Yep. Yep.
I'm sure you'll take a day or two.
We'll get some time. We'll get some time.
Enjoy your summer.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I don't know. Mr. Chief? All right. So we are now at our first opportunity for citizen input. If there are people in the audience that would like to speak to the council, please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address, direct your comments to me, and try and limit them to less than five minutes. All right. Not seen any takers. Moving on to the consent agenda items A through G. Do we need to pull any of those? Seeing none? Yes. Which one? E red. Okay. We will pull E. Any others we need to pull out? Okay. Any public comment on consent agenda items A through G, except E? Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda as presented, except E? Second. I'm gonna give it to Counselor Linton, seconded by Counselor McCarthy, that we approve the consent agenda as presented without E. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. On to E, Mr. Smith.
I, I think Counselor McCarthy was looking to just call attention to the fact that we have at-large council elections coming up, and this is the public notice of that, that we do every time before an election.
Okay. And that opened up last week, so if you're interested in running for one of the at-large positions, right? They can live anywhere in the city.
Correct.
And run for a council position. They could be neighbors.
That's right. They could all be in the same neighborhood.
All in the same zone. So these are the at-large, four at-large positions that are currently, Primmer, Harden, Peterson, and Dron.
Correct.
Okay. And so we have one applicant already, or two?
We have one officially.
One official applicant already. Okay. So it's now open through August 27th. So if you're interested in running for one of these distinguished positions on your city council, now is the time to do it and get involved. Um, so it's information only. We don't need to act on it.
That's correct. You don't really need to.
Okay.
Get any action.
Perfect. We are gonna move on now to public hearings. 2024-2025 budget of the city of Hermiston. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest from the council? Seeing none. Hearing guidelines will now be presented by the city staff.
The city council is holding a public hearing for the 2024-2025 budget of the city of Hermiston. City council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report, followed by public testimony. The council requests that all people wishing to testify give their name and mailing address before testifying. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the city council. Written testimony will also be accepted. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. Mr. Mayor.
We will now open the hearing. City staff will now present the report.
So the 2024-2025, I think we had a great budget committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to, from a overall budget perspective, the total budget number is 109,564,064 dollars is what's being recommended to the city council tonight from the budget committee. The, each of the resolutions kind of hits a different part of the budget, and and as we go through those, I can go into detail about each resolution as we move through adoption. But if there's in general any just questions or anything discussion about the budget, we can do that right now during the public hearing.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to public testimony. Are there people here that are wishing to speak? Please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address. Try to limit your comments to less than five minutes and direct them to me. Right. Seeing none, I will close the hearing. And counsel, any conversations or comments?
We were all there, so.
I, I was not there, so it went okay. Yeah. Good. Good.
Yeah, it went quite smooth without you.
See? You guys can move on without me.
He's practicing.
Yep. He's practicing. Any thoughts or comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I did get to share the last council meeting that we had about just specifically acknowledging the members of the budget committee. They had really, really good questions, the members of the public that were a part of the committee. So a big shout out to every single member that was on that committee because they came prepared. They came with really good questions. I, I shared that I personally was sitting next to Mr. Hanson, who I think did a terrific job in our budget committee presentation and had some really good questions. And I think city staff was also prepared with a lot of different options and recommendations, and I feel like it moved along pretty smoothly. I, I think the, when we had the budget discussion, a lot of the members of the budget committee that did come before the council when that did happen, you know, took it to heart as well. And so I, I was really happy with, you know, the participation and the strength of the questioning of our budget committee members. So I thought it went really smoothly.
Very good. That's, you know, helpful to have a more senior, mature, you know, budget committee as well, members that have participated historically and have seen the process evolve. And we had a pretty in-depth conversation throughout the year also about the budget. And so a lot of public information out there. But it is also an excellent way for the community to participate in what their city looks like. And for those people to step forward and engage in the process, it's, they don't get a lot of praise and thanks for it, so it's, it is important to make sure we recognize them. So I appreciate that, Mr. Brown, that you recognized the members for their participation and are thanking them for that because it is an important responsibility of our community that we have public members participate. And they do come informed, and I'm glad the, the administration had all the answers, and we didn't have to have a second meeting this year, which was great. All right. Any other comments from the council? Okay. We're gonna move on to resolutions. Resolution number 2325, authorize the installation of stop signs. Mr. Smith?
Yes. So the city was contacted by some residents in this area, which is Southwest Metalview Drive and Southwest River Hill Drive. City staff reviewed the request and is recommending installing stop signs. And because I know this question is coming, unfortunately, our diligent street department has already put the signs up. So next time, we'll try to make sure that they don't jump that gun, but we're requesting. So technically, if they're cited before they're authorized by the council, they, those tickets are not valid, but.
Oh, so I can drive over their speed now, babe?
Not if you decide that tonight.
Five minutes. So was one of the complainees a member of a local neighborhood around there?
No, not me. But yes, I believe they are residents of the neighborhood.
All right. Any counsel comments?
Like a good idea. I checked it out today, so.
Did you?
Yep.
Feel like they're warranted?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Harden says they're good. They must be good. All right. Any public comment? Nothing. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2325 and lay it upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Brown, seconded by Counselor Primmer, that we adopt resolution 2325 and lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2326, declaring the city of Hermiston's election to receive state revenues. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this, we, we adopt a resolution like this every year to say that if the state wants to give us money, that we'll take it. So yes, we would recommend that we approve this resolution.
Allheartedly, I'm assuming.
Yes, please.
And these are the state's pass-through funds.
Yeah, things like.
911.
The, the.
Tobacco tags.
Tobacco, our, our street road tax funds.
Okay. Perfect. Any counsel comments on that? Okay. Any public comments on resolution 2326? All right. Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2326 and lay it upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Primmer, seconded by Counselor Harden, that we adopt resolution 2326 and lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2327, adopting the city Hermiston's budget, making appropriations, imposing and categorizing taxes for fiscal year 2425.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I'd like to point out a couple of things. This is the, the actual adopting of the budget and all of the funds. The general fund is up quite a couple of million dollars. Most of that is, is due to the increases that have been approved in the police department staffing. So, and since you weren't there, part of that is a, a new partnership with Good Shepherd Healthcare System to, that they will cover for the cost of four officers so that they can have a dedicated officer at the hospital. So we're pretty excited about that. Already working on the challenge of hopefully finding some officers to fill that, those positions. The other thing I'd like to just point out, as far as new funds, the, down towards the end, we're talking about the Enterprise Zone Project Fund. That, that's gonna see a lot more activity over the next 15, 20 years, we hope. And so this year, it's up quite a bit. Also, we've implemented the, the bonds that were issued for the projects here. The library, Public Safety Center, and then Harken Rider and the, and the City Hall. So there's some additional funds kind of towards the end of the list that are now, that are new, that all kind of contribute to the increase on the, or the continued level of, of over $100 million for our total budget. We're down a little from last year, but still kind of up over the last, if you look at an average over the last few years. But with that, be happy to answer any specific questions.
Any counsel comments? Okay. Any public comment on resolution 2327? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2327 as presented and laid upon the record? So moved.
Second.
Is that Counselor McCarthy, seconded by, it was motioned by Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Linton, that we adopt resolution 2327 and lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 2328, establishing reserve funds for the city of Hermiston for fiscal year 2425.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is another one that we do based on how Oregon budget law is set up. So every year, we have to declare, basically, my simple explanation is our savings accounts, where we put money saving for future projects, and then we've adopted the practice of paying for those projects out of that, that reserve fund. So this just sets up all of the ones, all of the, the standard reserve fund accounts.
Of which there's a lot of them.
There is a lot.
Yeah. All right. Any counsel comments? Any public comment? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2328 and lay it upon the record?
So, second.
Then moved by Counselor Primmer, seconded by Counselor Harden, that we adopt resolution 2328, lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 2329, establishing city compensation plan for the city of Hermiston for fiscal year 2425.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this resolution, final budget resolution establishes basically our pay plan, sets up the steps, and then it also lays out the positions that we have in each of the, each of the classifications. One item I'd like to, to just point out that we've put as a, maybe a preemption, that's a, that's an additional possible position. It's not necessarily authorized, but we didn't want to have to add it to this resolution in a future time, and that is, so we've been providing prosecution services via a contract, and we've been having trouble finding an attorney willing to do that or enable. So we are, we, we have added a deputy city attorney for prosecution as a possible position. If we needed to go that direction, it would be in the same, right now, the way we have it thought about is it'd be in the same pay as what we've been paying for the contract. So it wouldn't be any additional funds. It's just, it would be a, a different way to provide that service. So before we finalize that, we would, we would, we would, before we finalize that, we would come before the council to, to adjust, because right now, that money's in materials and services. It would need to be in personnel services. The overall amount for the court wouldn't change. It's just the approach. And finding attorneys has just been so difficult. We just were able to get a defense attorney a couple of months ago. Yeah. So on contract, but we just have not had the luck with the prosecution. So this was just, we wanted to put this in place as a possible option as we look into.
As far as pay scale changes, 3% COLA?
Yeah, 3% COLA for all, all the positions.
Any other questions? Yeah, Counselor Brown?
Just on the assistant city attorney position, then would that, that position, then would that, then maybe a city employee in terms of, in terms of benefits and everything that comes with? Okay. Okay. So it's the contract, but then it's also in terms of, you're gonna have to pay a little bit more than just the contract, right?
Right, but the contract, the contract amount would be inclusive of the full benefit package, whatever we offer it at.
And understand, and I, I definitely understand that that's gonna make it more enticing for an attorney to want to maybe come here versus somewhere else.
Yeah, we're not sure. You know, it's been, I mean, all, I, I would say all the counties in the state are looking for prosecutors, deputy DAs. So it's, it's gonna be a toss-up, but we're, we're trying to use every tool we have to try to find somebody.
Counselor Primmer?
Yeah. So is, is this position already in? I mean, is this like when we've already approved?
Well, it's, it isn't, like, it's not in the budget that had the, you know, position, adding new positions. It, it isn't in there. We're adding the title into the classification schedule so that if we needed to go down that route, we could do that. But it's not necessarily approved as a new position.
So we're creating a position, but we're not creating a position, and we're okay with that?
Yeah, there are a number of positions in the, in the schedule of jobs that we don't have someone in. But we have a job that we, that in the future, we may, or in the past, we have used that title. And so we, this, we're just putting that there so that we can have that option if we need to. I'll see if I can find a quick example on the list.
So would we have to come back, or would you have to come back later and approve a budgetary change if we were to add an individual?
Yes.
Onto our staff? Okay. So currently, we have a budget allocation for a contracted prosecutor.
Correct.
Okay. So we would probably just transition that money from that allocation over to pay for this employee?
Yes. So we're not asking for any additional money, and that's why we didn't really point it out in the budget committee discussion. But as we got to this point, we wanted to make sure that we had that title in case we wanted to, needed to kind of go that direction. So.
All right. That explains it. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any public comment? Can I get a motion to adopt resolution number 2329, lay it upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Harden, seconded by Counselor McCarthy, that we adopt resolution number 2329, lay it upon the record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. On to number 10, city committee and liaison reports.
I have one.
Yes, Counselor Harden?
Our, uh, we, we met, the faith-based advisory committee met, and stepping, Jessica from stepping home.
Jesslyn?
Je- Jessica, right?
Jessalyn.
Jessalyn, okay.
Yep.
But there are five guests that moved into their huts, and there were supposed to be a couple more. They, they met the requirement of 14 consecutive nights. If they happen to skip one of the, miss one of those, it starts all over again. And, and they, they also agreed to 15 hours of community service. So, and there's staff available now 24/7. And they've got 20 that's, that's normally spending the night. Actually, it's normally 50. Actually, it's normally fifteen to eighteen, but they've, they've, that's been a little bit higher up uptick. And so they've had twenty spending the night. We've actually had, got some extra people from Pelton that's spending the night. I don't know why at this point, but and they have the showers are up and running. And then a couple of other things. True Care has a new director apparently, and they're, they're moving towards having a clinic in this area now, so. That's about it, I remember, right? Did I miss anything, Lilly?
I love my city event went well.
Yeah, they, they had a report on that, and they were very pleased with it.
Very pleased.
I think, I think they, they want, they want to do that a little bit more often as far as the cleanup. Maybe not just once a year, but maybe make that available more than once a year. So it was that New Hope I know that hosted it.
New Hope and Zeal, I think, principal. I think they had seventeen or eighteen different churches involved.
Eighteen churches, yeah.
Five hundred or something volunteers, Brandon, do you, something like that? Sound about right, yeah. Perfect, thank you. Any other committee liaison reports, Mr. McCarthy?
We just had our second Business Advisory Ad Hoc Committee meeting, and we discussed the mayor, I, I think it was Val Tammy Senior, I can never get her name. Finer. Chris Bennett, Judy Peterson, and Kristy Copax all present. And we did come up with a recommendation, and I don't know what meeting that'll be present in. But basically what happened is the way that city staff has presented the business license fee is what was voted on, six to one.
Yeah, it was approved unanimously, or not unanimously, but approved six to one. So will the administration bring that back for a council vote in the future?
Yeah, likely the next meeting, I just need to check the agenda.
Okay, so good news.
Yeah, we're moving on.
Yep.
They did tell me they were interested in coming back to be present. A few of them were interested in coming back to be present at the council meeting where we actually have that discussion.
Perfect. All right. Other committee liaison reports? Okay. Mayor's report. Well, since I haven't really been here, tough for me to report on anything. But I wanted to say thank you to Counselor Primmer for filling in for me for the last city council meeting. And did you have to do that too, open it and close? Yeah, thank you for serving on the Budget Committee for me as well. I appreciated the time off.
We all understood you needed it.
Yeah. All right, so council report. Anything?
I have a couple of things.
Yeah?
That I wanted to bring up.
Sure.
Okay. I had a talk about with the, one of the directors, well, not a director, on the board of the Harkenrider.
Yeah.
And one of the things I talked about that I brought up to them is that this, if the city could give more funds so that they could have meals five days a week for seniors and cut the cost down to two fifty. Right now it's two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday. And the people that go there and exercise, they donate a dollar to use the room. And that is to buy meals for some of the people that can't even afford the ten dollars a week, that they take the food out and deliver it to them. And I don't ask, I go there sometimes just to sit with the seniors. I'm a senior anyway, but anyway. And, you know, so if they want to talk about something, so they'll be, feel free to do so. I don't ask them what their income is, you know, you want to leave people with dignity. But I did have a pastor that asked someone once, and they said they only brought home, their social security was only seven hundred dollars a month. I don't even know how they're making it, but so we do have some seniors that can't afford. And so I'm hoping that the council will, they're going to get a budget up for me because I asked them how much is their food? And how much it would cost for them to deliver out because they have someone that drives. I think they volunteer, and then they need, the cooks will need to be probably full-time. So when I get that information, I'll bring it back and let you know what, how much we'd be able to donate.
Do they have a board?
Yes, they have a board.
The Harkenrider Center has a board.
Yeah, they have a board. And they're, I think they're doing a really good job of what they are doing, you know, and how they help out with the, the food and the different people volunteer and everything like that. And then the other thing that I had was for the Chamber of Commerce. I know they've been getting like three percent a year, and I was hoping that we could raise that up to maybe eight percent a year. And I even made a couple of suggestions on how we could take five percent off here, five percent off over another. Well, anyway, and to come up with the eight percent. And so it wouldn't have to add any more money from anything else. And I'm hoping that that'll give them the opportunity to be able to do more things in our community through the Chamber of Commerce. So those are two things that happened.
Did the chamber come to you and ask that, or is that just your observation? Oh, my goodness. Good for you.
I'll, I'll, I'll put in my chamber president hat. No, we have not had any conversation.
Okay. So we don't even know if needed.
I know what I'm about to, I mean, I wouldn't say no.
Yeah. So you could, you could find a way to use more money.
Well, I will say that I did look at Pelton because I know we like to compare, and Pelton does more, and we're bigger than Pelton.
Okay, thank you. Other council comments? Yes, Counsel Peterson?
So Hermiston had its very first pride, and roughly seven hundred and fifty people showed up. There was, I gotta say, when I walked in, and I saw nothing but positive when I walked in. I, I, it's been a long journey to get to this point. I've been at the receiving end of a fair amount of discrimination in my life. So I, I got a little teary-eyed, but I saw there was no negativity to be seen. We had a really nice forum of, you know, Angela Purcell, who, as we all know, does our, when we have, you know, our lovely talks up here, and she asks our questions and things. So it was a great event. There were about four of us that answered questions and kind of shared a bit about what it's like to be on this side of the rainbow. And it was, is that we had lots of community organizations show up. And it was just a very positive experience, and it was just, I was just so proud of us as a community. It was amazing. And again, I'm going to tear up again if I think about it because the number of individuals that I talk to on a regular basis who have battled, you know, discrimination their entire life, and then to be in a welcoming place, I mean, it's, it, it can add years to your life and add life to years. And so I just wanted to say thank you to all of Hermiston for just, for that amazing, as I said, I, I, it was, I, again, I'm going to tear up again because it was just, it was amazing. I was so proud of us. And that was, I, and anyone who might have felt otherwise, they, they just kind of, they gave us space that day, and it was, it was, it was good. I've been, I've worked security at events like that. I've been an organizer at events like that. But this time I just got to go and participate, and it was, it was awesome. It was so awesome. So thank you, Hermiston, for being so supportive of that because that it's been a long, long fight to get to this point, and I, I could not be happier. So, thank you.
Very good, congratulations. Any other comments from the council? McCarthy?
Byron, you can add to this if you want, but I, as President of Kiwanis and Byron, as President of Rotary, along with, I will forget their names, Byron, so help me out here. I met with the leaders of Altrusa and was it, was, they were both Altrusa? Okay, I didn't realize that. It didn't seem like they knew each other. Well, we met to discuss some, just start discussions on ways that our local service clubs can be more engaged with each other. Maybe combine to one super community event. We, we talked about the Battle of the Books that Altrusa recently did, maybe increasing more visibility that way. So just kind of be on the lookout for maybe a, some kind of inter-club, inter-organizational event on the horizon.
Great. Anybody else? Yeah, Counsel Brown?
You know, I don't know if anyone has brought it up, but I was curious to know what we are planning on doing with the information that the, the group presented, the Civic Leadership Academy members, the information that they shared. I think we had talked about in the future kind of digesting the information and, and kind of seeing what we want to do with it. But I thought it was kind of interesting and you know, some, all of that we heard was from people that were interviewed. But at the same time, I felt like a lot of the things that they came and shared are things that the city has, has been working on. And you know, then I think it, it was just, I didn't want to come out and sound like I was being defensive, which because I didn't want to invalidate the work that they had done. So I was just curious to, to know, you know, or if you've had a chance to kind of read the information. But I thought it was very interesting, but certainly, you know, going forward. And even as a council, maybe deciding on what the next project will be. You know, I, I know that they had parent or community engagement. It's a huge piece of, that the city wants to do, not just with businesses, but with the community as a whole. But maybe also having that discussion as a council so that at the end of their term, you know, we're able to also be better prepared in hearing the feedback that we're gonna get.
So my plan is to, and I haven't completely set the date as far as which meeting, but come back with a response from the staff related to some of the things that we feel like we have done in, in there, and some of the things that we, you know, feel like we could potentially take on and, and use to improve some of the things that we're already working on. So either, either it'll be at the next meeting or probably the second meeting in July is kind of the way the the agendas are lining up for that. But as far as the next, you know, I, I, that's a great idea. I, I pulled that topic for them out of, you know, the council goal setting. It's been a, an item that the council discussed a lot, and so that was why I chose that for this first one, so.
Was there as part of this civic academy, it was to help develop potentially some new civic leaders? I mean, that was one of the expected or potential outcomes. But was there really action by the council, or was, was, was there? I mean, what was the expectation that was an outcome?
It was to bring back recommendations or ideas related to the question of how, how to increase community engagement.
Okay. Gotcha. But was the council then supposed to respond to that? No, we were just supposed to receive that?
Just receive it and then take it to incorporate, and that's why I would bring back
Future conversation.
Our response or our thoughts on their report, and then the council can also react to it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brown? Anyone else?
Never mind, never mind.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, Mike?
Yeah?
Okay. I just wanted to mention that Juneteenth is coming up on the twenty-second of this month at McKinley Park. It's a celebration of a hundred, I think this makes a hundred and fifty-nine years that slavery has ended in America. It's also an American holiday for this country, and we're hoping that everyone will be able to come out and, and celebrate with us. And as one was speaking about discrimination, that's, it's still happening today. I've even had someone say to me, a couple of people, about they wish slavery, slavery was still going on. And I'm not going to say what else they said, it just kind of shocked me when it said to my face like that, you know, as an African-American woman, and someone says that to you. So, you know, that's life in America, that's life around the world. And we just have to adjust and move on and live our life and, and not try to force people to think another way. Hopefully the Lord God will intervene in their minds or whatever. But I'm hoping that more people will come out and celebrate. A lot of people don't, but that's okay. We live in a democracy to where you can choose what you want to do and not. And I'm thankful for that.
When's the celebration?
It's, it's going to be on the twenty-second this year.
June twenty-second, where at?
Yes, at McKinley Park, and starts at four P M.
McKinley?
McKenzie.
McKenzie.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, not in Hermiston. At four P M.
There's also one over in Tri-Cities, if anybody want to go there, they give out a lot of food. Free food, I'm going.
All right, perfect. Anything else from the council? Counsel Brown?
I had the opportunity to participate in Business Networking Social with the high school. It was kind of an opportunity to give seniors that were in advanced business procedures an opportunity to network with community leaders and try to get, really kind of dip their feet into what the real world is going to look like, how networking looks like, talking to different community members and stakeholders. So it was, it was a really positive event. I really enjoyed it. It was at the bookstore, which is a really wonderful place to host a lot of things, honestly. It was really beautiful in there. It's been a while since I've been here. So other than that, I, I really appreciated that. I wasn't able to attend the Copes grand opening nor the, the mainstream Kagan Cork, but big shout-outs to those two. I guess, not companies, but you know, groups that are establishing themselves in their community. They're going to definitely make positive change, and I'm excited to see the work that they will do. And I'll definitely stop by and, and both of those places, get myself a little coffee and definitely stop by the Copes and, and see their grand opening and, and what they're offering for the community.
I did, yeah, I did have a coffee on Sunday morning, breakfast sandwich at Kagan Cork or
Maple Moose.
Maple Moose, yeah. I think in the morning it's Maple Moose, in the afternoon it's Kagan Cork, something like that. Yeah. And the place is beautiful. It's a very nice addition to Main Street and downtown, so. Yeah, if you haven't been yet, please stop by and, and support them. Another small business trying to make a go of it here in Hermiston, so I encourage you to help them out. No youth advisors here this evening, right? School's out, they sometimes hide around the corner there.
Yeah, most of them, I think.
Graduated?
Done.
Manager's report, Mr. Smith?
I, I really only, I, I will just mention that Counselor Linton and I were at the Copes ribbon cutting this, this morning. And it's great, great to meet some of the leadership of that organization. And I think many of you are familiar with Jesus Rome. He's working for them, and I think he'll be a great asset to, to help them kind of get connected and work within Hermiston, so. It was a good, a good event this morning, but that's all I have.
Okay, we are not finished yet. We are going to recess city council meeting and reconvene the Urban Renewal Agency meeting with a call to order. All members present except for Counselor Myers. And new business is public hearing for the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five budget of the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency. Are there any declarations of a conflict of interest? Seeing none, can we hear the hearing guidelines?
The Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency is holding a public hearing for the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five budget of the Herman, Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency, also called HIRA. The HIRA will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report followed by public testimony. The HIRA requests that all people wishing to testify give their name and mailing address before testifying. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the HIRA board. Written testimony will also be accepted. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the HIRA will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received.
We're going to open the hearing, and say staff will now present its report. Mr. Spencer?
So tonight we're looking at the budget for the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency. We have six million, fifty thousand dollars in the budget, spread out over three different areas, the downtown, the southwest and the north urban renewal area. Out of the six million dollars, five million is allocated towards, um, the north urban renewal area and the street, and then the remaining portion just goes to different projects within the other age areas.
Okay. Um, any public testimony tonight about the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency budget? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing. Any conversation from the council? There was an increase, right, Mr. Spencer, in the downtown facade grant program?
Yes, uh, we had reduced it last year to twenty thousand and now we're taking it back to the sixty that we had originally had it set at.
Great. Okay. Um, any other questions from the council? Okay. Here a resolution number twenty-three, adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency. Mr. Smith?
Sorry, I totally was not listening.
We're going to move on to
How about Mr. Tubby?
Resolution number twenty-three, adopt the fiscal year twenty-four budget for the Hermiston Urban, yeah.
That's the adoption of the budget that Mr. Spencer just described.
Okay. Um, any comments from the council about the HIRA budget? Nope. Any public comment? Okay, can I get a motion to adopt here a resolution number twenty-three and laid upon the record?
Still moved.
Second.
Then moved by Mr. Primmer, seconded by Ms. Counselor Linton. Motion by, moved by Counselor Primmer.
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Linton, that we adopt fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget for the Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes and it's not even eight o'clock yet and we're all phasing off.
Well, maybe we should up this talk and
Yeah.
The end of this school year.
All right, any unscheduled communication for HIRA? Spencer, nothing. Okay, we are going to adjourn the urban renewal agency meeting and reconvene the city council meeting and recess for executive session. The city council of the city of Hermiston will now meet an executive session in a large conference room on the second floor for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining negotiating real property transactions and to consider preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade or commerce in which the governing body is in competition with governing bodies in other states or nations. The executive session is held in pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero two E, which allows the council to meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to negotiation of real property transactions and O R S one nine two point six six zero two G, which allows the council to meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade and commerce. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session with the audience may attend. The executive session will last approximately one hour. Okay, stretch it out. All right, so where are we going upstairs? Okay.
All right, we are going to reconvene the regular city council meeting. Anything else for the good of the order?
We're adjourned.